Excellent. Okay, I'm gonna call this second and dare I say, final session of the Special Town Meeting 2023-1 to order. If folks could just quiet down. So, welcome everyone, glad you're here. Just a reminder for any new folks.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Got it. This is our hybrid town meeting. It's a special town meeting. And we have folks who are participating as elected town meeting members here in the hall, participating in person. We also have members who are working remotely and voting and participating remotely. So you'll see a little bit of back and forth and you'll be able to follow that on the screen to my right here. I want to welcome some special visitors. Mr. Harmio, I'm very glad that you're here with your government class. So, welcome to your cohort, we're glad you're here. And I know that we have some other visitors as well, who I will introduce later. And again, any members of the public who are here and wish to speak for or against any motion under discussion tonight, you may do so. We have a staff person. Oh, Jonah, what's your name? Mr. Miller, our new director of communications is up there. And if you wish to speak, he can put your name into the virtual queue and at the appropriate time I'll call on you. It's a three-minute time limit to speak for or against a motion. The same three-minute time limit that our town meeting members have, speaking for or against a motion. We also have some public statements that have been delivered in advance electronically from members of the public who can't be here tonight. And at the appropriate time, Mr. Miller will read those when I call on him and recognize him for that purpose. At this time, town meeting members, I want to do two things. We want to use our devices to vote electronically by, to register your attendance. But before you do that, I'd like for you to look at the menu on the left-hand side and click "Set Location" just to make sure. And this is true for the folks who are working remotely as well. I want to make sure you've set your location correctly, either that you're in person in Baton Hall, or for the folks at home that you are remote. Again, that will just help me to kind of keep track of where everyone is and I won't keep looking in the hall for someone who's remote and vice versa. Once you've done that, we are going to open up the voting screen. This is your chance to register your attendance. I'll wait for that screen to be available. Okay, the voting screen is available. So, this is an instruction for everyone, remote and in person. In order to register your attendance, please cast a vote. It can be yes, no, or abstain. The most important thing is that you hit that "Cast Your Vote" button and make sure you get the proper feedback that says that we've registered your vote. If anyone at this time in the hall is having trouble using the voting module, please stand in place and raise your hand and a member of the staff will help you. Likewise, if you are remote and you are having difficulty, please use the "Raise Hand" function in Zoom. Mr. Pato and I are monitoring that list and we'll call on you if we see a raised hand. But at this point, I see no raised hands. We're gonna keep the attendance module open for a little while now. But what I'd like to do is share two town meeting member memorials tonight. So, Julian Jacob Busking passed away on September 16th at the age of 98. Julian was born on March 26, 1925, to Stefania and Joseph Busking in Lvov, Poland, what is now Lviv, Ukraine. On September 1st of 1939, a year after Julian's bar mitzvah, the German army invaded Poland. On September 18th, Julian, his parents and his sister Janine fled Poland, making a crucial decision that likely saved their lives, to travel south towards Romania rather than east towards Russia, thus avoiding capture by the Soviet Army and almost certain death in Siberia. In Romania, Julian enrolled again in school, first at a French boys' school, but by 1940, there were enough Polish immigrants in Romania to open a separate Polish school, so he transferred there. His parents became increasingly concerned for their safety in Romania and tried to gain visas to somewhere safer. Julian's father still had four bars of gold that he had smuggled into Romania, so he was able to convince the British mandate of Palestine that he was a capitalist, not a refugee, thus gaining capitalist visas. On March 20th, 1940, the family left Romania for Haifa, arriving there on March 25th, a day before Julian's 15th birthday. After finishing high school in Tel Aviv, Julian joined the Polish Second Corps, which had become a part of the British Army. He first trained with an armored unit in Egypt. And years later, when anyone criticized his driving, he joked, "I first learned to drive a tank." He saw combat in Italy as a member of the light anti-aircraft artillery and participated in the Polish army attack on Mont Cassino and later fought in the battles of Akona and Bologna. When the war ended, he was sent to northern Italy to help the British soldiers sort the liberated concentration camp survivors. This experience revealed the horrors that his family had narrowly avoided by leaving Poland and Romania. Julian remained briefly in Italy, attending the Polytechnic of Turin, and then transferred to the Polish resettlement corps in England, resuming his studies at the University of London, where he received a Bachelor's of Science, Engineering, and Telecommunications. In 1941, he came to the United States. He enrolled at MIT and began to establish a new life. He received his Master's of Science in Electrical Engineering degree from MIT in 1951, publishing his thesis, later known as the "Bus Gang Theorem," as a report for MIT's Research Laboratory of Electronics. The Bus Gang Theorem became a popular tool for stochastic analysis. Okay, I looked this up so I could explain it. Can't do it. And signal processing with important applications in radar, sound, and digital communications. He earned a PhD in Applied Physics from Harvard in 1955. He went to work in MIT Lincoln Laboratory and then at RCA's Aerospace Division. And then he founded Signatron, an electronics communication company in Lexington, that went on to make significant impacts in fields of applied physics, electronics, and communications. He consulted to Grumman Aircraft, contributing to the Apollo 11 lunar module project for the first manned moon landing. And he served as consultant in the creation of Raytheon's Patriot Missile Defense System. He held six patents and a top-secret security clearance. He also lectured in the Graduate of Electrical Engineering program at Northeastern and taught a graduate course in signal processing at Harvard. In 1984, Signatron was acquired by the defense electronics firm Sunstrand Corporation and Julian retired in 1987. In honor of his professional contributions, he was named a Life Fellow at the Institute of Electrical and Electronic Engineers and received their Distinguished Service Award. After retirement from Signatron, Julian and his beloved wife Fay began a second career together, a decades-long mission to support and memorialize the history of Polish Jewry. These efforts included living in Warsaw and Krakow after the fall of the Berlin Wall, volunteering with the nonprofit International Executive Service Corps, helping to privatize Polish industry. Julian and Fay also translated two volumes of wartime accounts of child survivors still living in Poland. In honor of his army service and leadership in supporting Polish-Jewish relations after the war, Julian was awarded the Knight's Cross of the Order of Merit of Poland in 2011. One can speculate that these efforts were fueled in part by a survivor's burden, which Julian described in his memoir. "Many members of my family, our friends and acquaintances, many of my school friends, many of the people I knew and loved were killed by the Nazis. I've been one of the lucky ones, I survived." But he added, "The Holocaust still affected me, lurking in the depth of my soul, there's a gnawing sorrow and haunting memories." Julian first met Fay Vogel, who had a doctorate in education from Harvard, through a mutual friend. They married in 1960, they raised three children here in Lexington, Jeffrey, Jessica, and Julie. Lexington was their home for over 40 years, before Fay and Julian moved to a retirement community in Dedham 14 years ago. Here in Lexington, Julian was very actively engaged in civic life. He served in town meeting for close to 20 years. He was chair of the Cable TV and Communications Committee and served on a number of other committees, including the Environmental Subcommittee of the Hanscom Area Towns Committee, tasked with assessing the environmental impacts of Massport's Hanscom Field Airport activities and their expansion proposals. Those of us who are lucky enough to know Julian and serve with him remember him fondly as soft-spoken, analytical, whip-smart, with a droll sense of humor. His son Jeffrey describes how, despite his extraordinary professional accomplishments, his father was remarkably ordinary at home: loving, playful, silly. And that, despite all he had endured in his childhood, somehow he just retained an extraordinary optimism and positivity. We extend our deepest sympathies to Julian's wife Fay, to his children Jessica, Julian, Jeffrey, their spouses Thomas, Rich, and Linda, and his eight grandchildren and beloved nephew, he will be missed. William A. Ridgely Sr. passed away on April 17th of this year at the age of 87. Bill, as he was known, was born in Cambridge, Massachusetts, on Easter Sunday, April 12th, 1936, to Marguerite Eleanor Ridgely and Frederick Ridgely. He was the seventh child of a family that grew to 11 children. From a very young age, Bill exhibited a strong sense of responsibility and a keen desire to help others. He led by example, as a Boy Scout, as a traffic crossing guard, and this quality, leading by example, became a theme throughout his life. In January of 1958, during the Vietnam War, he enlisted in the US Army, where he saw combat in the 25th Infantry in Laos. In 1961, he transitioned to the Army Corps of Reserves, receiving the Good Conduct Medal and an honorable discharge in 1963. In 1961, Bill joined the Cambridge Fire Department. In 1976, he earned an Associate's Degree in Fire Science from Massachusetts Bay Community College, graduating with honors. As he rose through the ranks of the Cambridge Fire Department, he continued to lead by example and teach the next generation of firefighters, both as an instructor at the Massachusetts Fire Academy and as supervising instructor for the City of Cambridge Junior Fire Brigade Program. In fact, in 1977, he was a finalist for the position of Fire Chief right here in Lexington. In 1982, he was promoted to Captain, becoming one of the first African-American Fire Captains in Cambridge. He would hold that rank until his retirement in 1995, having served with great distinction for more than 33 years. In 1964, Bill married Beverly Fuller and they had two children, Michelle and William Jr., Billy. The family moved to Lexington in 1968, and here he quickly immersed himself in the community and here too, he came to lead by example, to help build for his own family a more inclusive and equitable community. His daughter Michelle remembers bringing home a book from the elementary school library that many would consider racist and inappropriate, an incident which inspired her father to join the school PTA and then to run for town meeting, becoming the first black citizen elected to this body. He served two three-year terms from 1977 to 1983, proudly representing Precinct 3. In this role, he passionately addressed injustice and inequality. For example, challenging the police chief on the disproportionate number of traffic stops for people of color in town. With equal passion and enthusiasm, he displayed his love for and deep pride in our community, proudly participating in the Patriots Day Parade and emerging as a champion in town meeting for the establishment of Lexpress. Michelle has vivid memories of the night that town meeting voted to approve the start of Lexpress service. Even as a child, the importance and excitement of that moment was not lost on her, and the lesson of what a group of determined people could do to improve the town they loved. There were other lessons from that time as well. There were the racist messages left on their home answering machine, the veiled or not-so-veiled threats meant to discourage her father from seeking reelection, but it didn't stop him. He and other residents formed the Concerned Black Citizens of Lexington, the precursor to today's ABCL, the Association of Black Citizens of Lexington, and Bill served as the organization's first president. Many years later, in 2021, the Association of Black Citizens of Lexington honored Bill by including him among the inaugural group of portrait banners depicting prominent African-Americans who've made significant impacts on the Lexington community, the Commonwealth, or the nation. I wish I'd known Bill, but his time in town meeting ended long before I moved to Lexington, so I am so very grateful to his daughter Michelle for sharing so many details of his life with me. She described a man who could both deeply love this community and shine an unflinching light on its shortcomings, all in the name of creating a more just, equitable, and fair community for all. She also said he wasn't afraid of raising a little heck if raising a little heck was what the moment called for. He was fiercely protective of his family. He worked hard to ensure that his children were provided for and actively fought for them to grow up in an inclusive community. On a very personal level, I'm sorry, I have a little bit of laryngitis, excuse me. On a very personal level, she described a man deeply dedicated to his family and exceptionally generous with those that he loved and cared for, taking great pleasure in giving to others. Every Valentine's Day, he arrived on her doorstep with a dozen roses in hand and made it clear that he didn't care if anyone else had given her flowers. He was famous for his chocolate chip cookies, which he would regularly bake and deliver to friends and family. Sorry. He also adored his only grandchild Alicia, the light and delight of his life. At her father's memorial service, Michelle challenged those in attendance to follow the example of her father and in doing so, to honor his legacy. In her words, "I ask that you practice gratitude, celebrate, and show appreciation for one another. Give others their flowers while they are here to receive them. Let them know that you see them, let them know that they are loved, respected, honored, and cherished." And that is a wonderful reminder for us all, Michelle, thank you. We extend our deepest sympathies to Bill's children, Michelle and Billy, to his former wife Beverly, they are all here tonight, his granddaughter Alicia, Michelle, Billy, Beverly are all here, and to his surviving siblings Frederick, Joe, and Maxine, he will be missed. Please join me in a moment of silence in memory of Julian and Bill. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna try to keep the voice going tonight. It's time for a Ricola. All right. So, at this time, we're gonna close the attendance. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Pato for a motion to next take up Article 9.
Madam Moderator, I so move.
If anyone has an objection, please use the "Raise Objection" function in the portal. Mr. Barnard, for what reason do you rise for a point of order? Or is that from previously when you wanted to report to me about the Comcast channel change? I'm gonna, Mr. Barnard, I'm gonna assume that it was about the earlier Comcast channel change. Okay, so I've seen no objections, so the motion carries for us to next take up Article 9. Meeting's open on Article 9, authorized home rule petition for special legislation establishing the election of town offices using ranked choice voting, citizens petition. The motion is the one before you, dated November 7th, 2023, and on file with the town clerk. That 20, that November 7th version just contains a small clerical error correction, so it's the same otherwise as the motion posted on October 21st. Mr. Avaloni for that motion.
Madam Moderator, I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Avaloni. Now, please view the screen behind me, folks at home, please navigate to Zoom so you can view the video presentation.
Hello, I'm Srini Chapada, sponsor of Ward Article 9. The main motion under this article proposes home rule legislation to adopt ranked choice voting for elections to town-wide offices. By democratic, we mean a system of representation through free elections, governed by the people, rule of the majority. Ranked choice voting is not Republican and not Democratic. RCV is about expanding your choices. RCV wants people to vote exactly however they want. Why change? Graphs show how low public approval is for our elected officials. Presidents generally top out at 60%. Since the second Bush presidency, most presidents served their term in the sub-50% range. Congressional approval has hovered around 20% since 2005. Incumbents win 90% of the time. 39% of our current Congress have served five or more terms. The public has no influence on the laws. Legislators focus 70% of their time on reelection rather than working on their constituents' issues. Vote-splitting and spoiler effects create endless punditry, polls, supposition, and backroom lobbying. This has become an integral part of campaigning. Voters need to game the system to make sure their votes count. Voters cannot just vote their conscience. Let's look at presidential elections without majority support. Bill Clinton won his second term with 49% of the vote, less than a majority. Some claim that Ross Perot spoiled the chance for Bob Dole. That's questionable when you look at the numbers, but it's plausible. In 2000, Judge Bush Jr. won with a minority of the vote. Ralph Nader was labeled a spoiler for splitting the vote in Florida. This is the historical case with probably the firmest statistical evidence. In 2016, the vote totals for third-party candidates Jill Stein and Gary Johnson exceeded Trump's margin of victory in several swing states. They were shamed as spoilers. Professor Cornel West has launched an independent bid for 2024. RFK Jr. is considering an independent run, and they both will be labeled as spoilers. Next, let's look at a local example. In 2019, Fall River Mayor Correa was under federal indictment for fraud and tax evasion. 61% of Fall River voters chose to remove him from office in a recall election. Correa then ran for reelection in a 5% field. Votes were split among his four alternatives. Correa won reelection with only 35% of the vote. Diluting the non-Correa vote made a 1% minority victory possible. Constituents got what 61% did not want. How is that a fair election? These examples show that electing our legislators without majority leads to a non-representative democracy. The threat of vote-splitting causes prospective candidates to bow out before the race begins. It means fewer campaigns drawing voters to the polls. Voters sometimes feel pressure to vote for the lesser of two evils. Fewer candidates means a less diverse candidate pool. In sum, it means campaigns are less welcoming, less inclusive, and less engaging than they could be. We can rinse and repeat, or we can go local. Our democracy and laws have changed throughout American history, often starting with grassroots action. For example, 19th Amendment was passed in 1920 after 30 states passed it. The Supreme Court struck down laws banning interracial marriage in 1967 after over 30 states passed similar measures. The right to marry was granted to same-sex couples by the court after over 30 states passed it. Ranked choice voting solves vote-splitting, reduces negative campaigning, improves diversity and voter participation. It won't solve issues like money in politics, gerrymandering, or voter suppression. In RCV, instead of voting for one candidate, you will rank multiple candidates in the order of your preference. If your top choice can't win, your next choice is counted. Let's see how RCV works. This is a sample ballot. Now, let's look at how ballots are counted. Candidates need to get a majority of the vote to win, also known as the threshold. Ballots are counted in one or more rounds until a majority is reached. Your vote is never wasted. Voting machines do the counting, it is instant and automatic. Let's look at a single-seat election in two scenarios. For a single-seat election, the winner needs more than 50% of the vote. For a 100-ballot election, the winner needs 51 votes. In a two-seat election, winners need more than 33 1/3% of the vote. That is 34 votes with 100 ballots cast. Three-seat elections need 26 votes to win, and four seats need 21.
Vote for your favorite color.
The instant runoff way.
Instead of voting for just one color, you get to rank your top three.
Well, purple is the best, but if I can't have purple, then I want blue. And if neither of those wins, then I guess I could live with yellow.
Now, let's count up everybody's votes.
Under instant runoff rules, it's not enough just to get the most votes.
You need a majority.
More than 50% of the votes.
So, purple's ahead, but it only has seven votes. It needs at least 11 to win.
So, we eliminate whoever's in last place.
Sorry, yellow fans, we're going to your second choice.
Two more for pink.
One for purple.
But no one has 11 votes yet.
Still no majority. Bye-bye, blue.
Three for purple.
Two for pink.
And we have a winner.
The instant runoff way.
Vote for your favorite colors.
The instant runoff way.
Now, with fractions. We already showed you how instant runoff elections work when there's only one winner.
But when there's more than one winner, it's a little more complicated.
We have five colors to choose from, and we're going to end up with three winners.
To start, each voter chooses a favorite color, a second choice, and a third.
All right, purple is my first choice, yellow comes in second, and I'll put blue in third place.
Now, we need a scoreboard. There were 36 votes cast. There will be three winners.
In order for a color to win, it needs more than a quarter of the vote. That's because if a color gets that much, then it's mathematically impossible for it to lose.
36 divided by four is nine, and we need just over that.
So, plus one is 10.
10 votes is the finish line.
Make it there, and you're one of the three winners.
So, let's count the votes.
No one's reached the finish line yet. That means it's time for round two.
And orange got the fewest votes, so it's out.
Everyone who voted for orange first now gets their second choice.
Purple reached the finish line.
In fact, purple has more votes than it needs.
That means each purple voter can take back a fraction of their vote and still leave purple with enough to win.
Under instant runoff rules, that's exactly what they get to do.
Purple has two votes to spare.
And that gets divided among the 12 purple voters.
So, each of them gets 1/6 of their vote back.
And that little piece will go to their next choice.
Now, blue has reached the finish line.
No votes to spare, so no more fractions.
Green is in last place, you know the drill.
Most of these votes are for colors that have already won or are already out.
We call those ballots exhausted.
Yellow didn't quite make it to the finish line, but there's no one else left.
So, we have our three winners.
The instant runoff way.
Next, where does RCV stand right now as a grassroots effort in Massachusetts? Cambridge has been using RCV since 1942. East Hampton, since 2019. Half a dozen communities approved home rule petitions for RCV and are waiting for the Joint Committee on Election Law to take action. Eight communities are in the process of pursuing RCV. And grassroots activity has begun in 27 other communities. In 2020, 62% of those who came to the polls in Lexington voted yes on ballot question two to implement RCV for the state and federal elections. Communities highlighted in purple are the cities and towns in the state where a similar majority voted yes on to. Alaska and Maine are using RCV for state and federal elections. New York City is using it for city primaries and special elections. RCV has been adopted in 49 local jurisdictions in 15 states to elect mayors. Six states use it for military and overseas voters. Democratic presidential primaries and caucuses used it in five states in 2020. Ranked choice voting use is Ranked choice voting use is growing rapidly around the country. RCV is used elsewhere around the world, at national elections, local elections, and for the party elections. There is no need for new hardware because Lexington voting machines already support RCV. The software, however, would need upgrading. Article Nine has been endorsed by the Lexington Democratic Town Committee, the Lexington League of Women Voters, and Progressive Mass. Thank you, and please support Article Nine to bring ranked choice voting to Lexington.
Thank you. For the recommendation of the Select Board, Mr. Sandin.
Madam Moderator, this article would authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court to enact special legislation for the purpose of implementing ranked choice voting in municipal elections for moderator, select board, school committee, Lexington Housing Authority, and planning board in the town of Lexington. The Select Board has three members who support passage of this article, one member who is opposed, and one waiting for town meeting discussion.
Thank you for the appropriation committee recommendation, Mr. Pottecky.
Madam Moderator, the appropriation committee was divided on this vote with three members for this article, four members against this article, and one abstained.
Thank you. We're now open for debate and discussion, so folks, please queue up using your portal if you wish to speak. Margaret Copey in the yes line.
Madam Moderator, Margaret Copey, Precinct Eight, and convener of the League of Women Voters of Lexington. The Board of the League of Women Voters of Lexington voted unanimously at its October second, two thousand and twenty-three meeting to support implementation of ranked choice voting in Lexington based on positions adopted by the state and national leagues in two thousand and five. League positions are based on extensive study and consensus across all leagues in the country. The goal of this position is that voting systems should be easy to use, administer, and understand, encourage high voter turnout, encourage real discussion on issues, promote minority representation, and encourage candidates to run. Ranked choice voting describes a system that requires a winning candidate to receive a majority of votes rather than just a plurality, and achieves that result by allowing voters to rank the candidates in the order they prefer. These systems can be used in any type of election. For example, they could be used for elections to executive offices like governor, attorney general, or mayor, and they can be used for elections of legislative bodies like state senates or the Select Board. The league position is that the winner in elections should be required to obtain a majority of the votes cast. The league supports the use of ranked choice voting in all elections, federal, state, and local, to assure the winning candidate receives a majority. And just as Lexington was a leader in the American Revolution two hundred and fifty years ago, let her be one of the leaders in adopting ranked choice voting in Lexington, which will help convince our state legislators and eventually the entire country to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Kaufman with a question.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Steve Kaufman, Precinct Five, with a couple of questions first. Through you to the maker of the motion. I was really confused by the example in the video where you had multiple people running for an office, and then the people, the candidate who had the most votes, once he won, the people that voted for that candidate got to have their votes counted twice for the other candidates. Why do the people who vote for the winning candidate get like more of a vote than the people who didn't vote for the winning candidate? It seems like that's not democratic. Am I misunderstanding the video? I'm confused by it.
Mr. Chapada, would you like for me to recognize Mr. Dennis? With pleasure, Mr. Dennis.
There we go. Greg Dennis, representing Voter Choice Massachusetts. Every voter only gets one vote. So, what you were seeing there, think of your vote like a dollar. Once your, if your first-choice candidate has enough votes to win, has enough sort of dollars to win, you may not need all of your dollar in order to elect them, in order to cross that threshold. So, whatever change you have left over can then be spent on your next choice. And if that candidate wins, you may have even a few cents left over to spend on your third choice and so on. So, you get one vote. Everybody gets one vote, but you may not need the entirety of that one vote to elect your first choice.
Mr. Kaufman.
Through you to the speaker. Through you to the speaker. So, effectively, though, if the person votes for the winner, or the person votes for the leader, the leading candidate, then they get like extra to vote for the other candidates, but the other people who voted for the person who didn't win don't get extra. So, in effect, somebody's getting like extra, and that doesn't seem democratic to me. So, I'm just confused by it. Can you articulate how that's fair?
Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If you vote for a candidate who is defeated, if your first choice is a candidate who is ultimately defeated, your full vote, that full dollar, will count to the next choice. So, everybody still gets one vote in this system. If your dollar is not spent at all in your first choice because that first's choice is defeated, it gets spent on the second choice. If it does get spent on the first choice, however much of it is needed, whatever change you have left over can be counted towards the next choice and so on. So, it's still a one-person, one-vote system. In fact, the academic name for the system is the single transferable vote because everyone gets a single vote.
Mr. Kaufman.
Okay, I will process that. I guess my second question would be, what is the problem in the town of Lexington that we're trying to solve? I saw the presentation, which was very articulate, and I understand the benefits at the national level, the mayor level, but within the town of Lexington specifically, can you point to any examples where this would solve a problem in the town in historical basis that, you know, we wouldn't have had this problem with ranked choice voting? Can you give me an example?
Mr. Chapada.
The problem that I've been hearing is not, you know, more candidates running and, you know, the problem is that we do not have enough candidates to run, right? And we do not have enough voters engaged. That is exactly why we need RCV. RCV gives the opportunity for the non-incumbents to run and, you know, have a shot at winning the seat. And they, in turn, can pull more candidates to the ballot. So, that's the problem that we have. That's the problem that RCV is going to solve.
Mr. Kaufman, you have nineteen seconds.
Okay, I guess I'll just leave it that I think ranked choice voting has merit. I don't necessarily understand the value in our election process. We've had hundreds of years of a majority vote system, so I'm not necessarily in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Bloom in the no line.
Gloria Bloom, Precinct Four. First, I'd like to say I'm very enthusiastic about ranked choice voting for single-seat elections, and I appreciate the effort to bring it into town. But when you have a two-seat election, as we have in two years out of three for all of these five-member boards, as you pointed out, you need thirty-three, one-third of the vote in order to get elected. So, as an example, there's been a lot of interest in the serious talks curriculum for the school committee. If we had an election where we had three candidates and two of them who represented sixty-five percent of the voters, and they would win because right now we get two votes for the first seat, and they were in favor of serious talks, they would win. With ranked choice, the majority, the thirty-five percent of the minority, the thirty-five percent that are opposed to serious talks, would win a seat, and then one of the other seats would go to the other candidates. So, I don't see that it gives you a majority at all when you have more than one seat at stake. You can get a minority easily winning. So, unless it was, unless we modified our elections in some way so that you had Select Board One, Select Board Two through Select Board Five, and they were all separate elections, and there was only one person that you were choosing, then I would be happy to have it. But with the two-seat thing, I think it's not democratic. It is a philosophical issue. Some people may feel if you're a minority of thirty-five percent, you deserve to have a vote on the board. We could discuss that, but this isn't ready. We need to have more discussion and more people to understand the complications with the two-seat election.
Thank you. And Mr. Miller, if you could read the public statement from Reena Shinar, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Reena Shinar, one thirty-six East Emerson Road. Dear committee members, I would like to express my support for establishing ranked choice voting in Lexington. Our goal in every election is to elect the candidates who best represent the community. Ranked choice voting serves that goal. It allows new and diverse candidates to run for an office or position, and for constituents to freely vote for them without fear of, quote, "giving their vote away," end quote, and by that, quote, "get a candidate they opposed elected," end quote. The tally mechanism is a bit more involved, yet quite simple, and that is outweighed by the benefits. Research also show other benefits such as increased turnout. Thank you.
Thank you. David Cantor with a question.
Madam Moderator, David Cantor, Precinct Seven. Could someone please runoff where it's applicable? I thought I heard a difference between proponent and the diagram. And secondly, I'm interested in whether this can be divided between town activities and state and national activities. Thank you.
Mr. Macarios.
Madam Moderator, I can take the second one. This would only apply to town elections because the town wouldn't have the ability to change it for state and federal elections, if that's the question.
Mr. Kaufman. I'm sorry, Mr. Cantor.
I thought there was a purpose for us going to the legislature first. Are you advising that the response that we can pass the legislation locally, that it does not address?
Mr. Macarios.
Madam Moderator, so to clarify, Mr. Cantor, there are two reasons. There's one reason you have to go to the legislature, but there's still a limitation. The town cannot change its form of voting, even on the local level, without authorization from the state legislator. So, that's why the home rule petition's needed, and because this has changed your special acts. However, even when you change voting processes for local elections, the legislator cannot or has not in the past, I suppose it theoretically could, has not ever endorsed, and this wouldn't do that, changing the way that one municipality elects its state and federal officials. For example, the city of Cambridge uses ranked choice voting today, has been authorized since the thirties. But when we vote for state and local, state and federal officials, we vote as a Cambridge resident the same way as you do in Lexington. Town, so city runs differently than state and federal.
Mr. Cantor.
The request for the legislation authority to be given to the town, that is not any control over which locality, if you would, gets to be used?
Mr. Macarios.
It's only a control over the elections within the town, so that's why it's limited to town officials. It does, the state and federal ballots still continue to be governed by state law and the voting system in place under state law. That would require the state changing it, either to allow towns to do it differently town-to-town, or to do it statewide by ranked choice voting, which I believe there are efforts to do, but that's a different matter.
Mr. Cantor.
The other matter, Madam.
I didn't understand the first matter. Could you repeat?
I just need clarification. I thought I heard between the proponent and what's being discouraged is to which part of our activity in the town of Lexington is covered by the proposed change in voting.
Mr. Macarios.
Sure. I don't recall exactly what was said, but the, what is covered by this proposal are now elected officials in the town, not including town meeting members. So, that is all Select Board members, school committee, virtually, I don't believe there's any other exceptions, but all the officers that you elect as officers, not town meeting members.
Mr. Cantor.
I would like to hear from the proponents as to why is town meeting excluded from us?
Okay, but Mr. Macarios, are you indicating you want to say something about that?
I do, actually, just before they start. The initial petition, I believe, was proposed with that, so I'll let the petitioners describe the process from here to there, but I would just add that there is additional legislation that would have to be amended because your Town Meeting Act that governs how you're elected is separate from the Town Manager Act, which governs how the rest of town officials are elected. So, part of the, there are more complications to doing it for town meeting than separately, but I'll let the proponents speak to the choice.
Thank you. Mr. Chapada.
So, we initially included the town meeting members in the motion, and after meeting with the Select Board and we got some counsel, and we understood implementing it for the town meeting members can be a little bit more complicated, and maybe it might lead to some confusion. So, for example, one of the points brought to our notice was, let's say for a seven-seat town meeting election, if, say, twenty people run, how would the ballot look like, right? Do we need to have a bigger ballot, and do we need to redesign? And how do we redesign this ballot, right? And how does the public react to this new ballot, and how do they, you know, vote based on that new ballot, right? So, that kind of made sense to us, and we wanted to do like, you know, in steps, like, let's do everything excluding the town meeting and get it right and streamline the process, and maybe come back to the town meetings after three years or five years and put it on the, put it on the RCV is our thought process.
Thank you. Mr. Cantor, any follow-up?
Just saying noted. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avelloni in the yes line.
Madam Moderator, Bob Avelloni, Precinct Eight. I've been advising the sponsors since I've been involved in the ranked choice voting movement since two thousand and nineteen. A lot of the questions I've gotten have been, well, I support it for state and local. I think it's great for that, but why do we need it in Lexington? My answer to that is a couple of reasons. We kind of have to want to set an example for other communities. We consider ourselves a leader. We're ahead of the curve on zero emissions. We're not going to solve the global warming in Lexington, but we're setting an example for the state and federal and nation and the world. Likely also on multifamily housing. We're a leader in that, one of the first communities to pass the multifamily housing initiative. We're not going to solve that problem alone here, but we're setting an example. The reason I think it failed, it was a great disappointment when it failed in twenty for the statewide. People didn't understand it, and when they don't understand something, then they're afraid of it. We get people used to the idea. It's only going to apply when there's three or more candidates for an office. I'd like to address the objection about the minority candidates winning with thirty-three percent of the vote. The way our system works, we have for the five-member boards, planning, school committee, Select Board, we have two candidates selected two years, and then the third year, we have one candidate. So, the minority candidate will not be able to get more than two seats under that system. And I think that's healthy to have different points of view on a committee. As far as the having a mums-of-liberty-type person on the school committee and causing, causing rabber-rousing. Donald Trump only got twenty percent of the vote in two thousand and twenty. We don't have enough people that feel that way, that they're going to be elected candidate anytime soon. So, with that, I would say I would send it back to you and urge my fellow members to vote yes on this article. vote yes on this article.
Thank you. Niles Barnard with a question.
Yes, Niles Barnard, Precinct Four. I have no problem with ranked voting for a single vacancy, but I have some questions when there, because in Lexington, the major boards have five members serving for three years, so two-thirds of the time will be two vacancies. So a couple of questions to the proponents. Suppose there's a situation where there are two vacancies, decent lots of candidates, and I rank them one, two, three, four, five, et cetera, but I think that my first candidate is so much better than the others, and I want to do my most to make sure that candidate gets in. Currently, I can bullet vote and vote alone for one and not catch a second vote. Can I do that under ranked voting?
Mr. Chapada or Mr. Dennis?
Thank you. With ranked choice voting, you are free to vote for as many or as few candidates as you'd like, so you can vote for just one. However, one of the advantages is that you no longer have to play this game of do I or do I not bullet vote in the multi-seat offices, because there is no strategic incentive to bullet voting. So if you only have one choice, and you either don't have an opinion about the rest or don't care about the rest, yes, you could still vote for one, that is a valid vote. But there is no need to play any games in the voting booth or strategize or try to give an additional sort of oomph to your first choice by bullet voting them.
Thank you. Mr. Barnard with a follow-up.
If I do that, and my candidate survives the first, but unfortunately is eliminated in the second round, how will my two votes be allocated by the system for the third round? Will it allocate one to my second choice and one to my third choice? Or since I only vote for one on my first choice, would I only allocate one vote and I'll lose a second? Or will it think that I don't want anybody else and eliminate any of my votes?
Mr. Dennis.
Your vote is going to count for your first choice as long as they are in the running, as long as they are, until they are either elected or defeated. Once they are elected or defeated, your vote can then count towards your second choice, until that candidate is either elected or defeated. So it's going to count for at most one candidate sort of at a time. If they're defeated, then that full vote counts to the next choice. If they're elected, then the remainder of the vote that's needed, the remainder of the vote that you have left is counted to the next choice.
Mr. Barnard.
But the vote that I didn't make because I bullet voted will never be counted on a subsequent round.
Mr. Dennis.
If you bullet vote, yes, if you bullet vote and your first-choice candidate wins...
Then loses.
Say, okay, your first-choice candidate loses, then you have said with your ballot that if that candidate doesn't win, I don't care about who wins. I have no other choice, I have no other preference. That's what the voter is communicating if they bullet vote. So if you do have a preference in the case your first choice loses, then you, it is in your interest to indicate that on the ballot.
Mr. Barnard.
I prefer my present method. I probably will vote no.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, I'm going to alternate between statements submitted in advance and folks who are here, so I'd like to call on Adam Harrington, please. Mr. Harrington.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Adam Harrington. I am a proud graduate of Lexington Public Schools and a lifelong Lexington resident. I'm here to speak in favor of ranked choice voting. One second. I want ranked choice voting because I want a system where I can vote my conscience without actively compromising my policy interests. Currently, under first-pass-the-post voting, which is the current system we have, if I vote for a candidate and there are two candidates, let's say on my side of the aisle that I like, I am forced to split my vote between them, potentially making it more likely that the candidate I least want is going to end up in power. This sort of strategy is discouraging to voters, it's frustrating, and it creates a lot of the problems that people have with our current system. Lexington is a historically significant town. We are an important town. What we do here will send a clear message to other towns and cities. We have to, we have a chance to lead on this issue by example and fulfill our revolutionary promise of liberty and justice for all. I know the math is complicated, it can seem really confusing, the math behind voting systems gets really weird, and it's hard to represent those choices, but ranked choice voting is just providing more options for people and allows them to more easily vote for their conscience without inadvertently throwing the election to the candidate that they least want. Now, some of the people who seem to think that they don't want this have brought up things, why Lexington, we may not have that many contested races, we may not have that many issues. I would answer by saying that those are symptoms of our current voting system. If we don't have that many people running, if there aren't that many contested races that this would be affected by, that suggests that there is a deeper problem and that we need to change course rather than continuing on. We want more people running for office, we want more viable candidacies, because that's what gets people engaged and invested, that's what brings voters to the polls. With our current system, it's possible for candidates to win with a plurality rather than a majority of votes. We've seen the danger of minority rule in this country, and especially when there are multiple candidates, you can win with an increasingly small percentage of the vote rather than a majority. With ranked choice voting, those problems go away and we can have a better democracy, instead of having these outcomes where candidates that only have a small amount of support are able to then win elections. That's what discourages people from voting, especially young people, when they see a system that doesn't seem to care about their interests, their specific policy preferences, and they have no way to express it without also sabotaging other candidates that they might want to vote for. Please support Article Nine and ranked choice voting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Mr. Anderson in the yes line.
Mark Anderson, Precinct Nine. I'm going to stand up here and support it. I do hope someone behind me in the yes line talks a little bit more about the multi-seat situation, because I am struggling a little bit with some of the examples tonight. But I do think that I would discourage us from focusing on symbolic issues. I think we have to ask whether this is better for Lexington. I do think the proponents and some of the prior speakers have failed to really address why this matters for Lexington, and I'd like to explain why I do think it matters for Lexington. I've lived here for 25-plus years. In many years, there have been coalitions that have put forward candidates, for example, for school committee or select board, and I don't know how to describe these coalitions. Let's describe them as the happy people and the grumpy people. And the happy people decide behind closed doors who to put forward as a candidate for the position, and so do the grumpy people. And when we get to the ballot, we find that there's one happy person and one grumpy person to choose from, and we don't have a lot of choices. And I don't like the fact that this is happening behind back rooms. If I'm a grumpy person, then I want to choose among the grumpy people, and if I'm a happy person, I want to choose among the happy people. And I don't think we should have a system that discourages us from putting forward all of the candidates so that we can choose who best fits. What's happening right now is, this is happening outside the public sphere with no transparency. And I think many of you who've been involved in Lexington politics for a while know what I'm talking about. You don't want to put forward multiple competing candidates for a seat who are on the same end of the political spectrum, because they'll divide the vote. All of us who are voting in the presidential elections see this very much with Trump and Biden today. There may be a primary system, and some of us may or may not like the primary system, but when it comes to your vote, you're stuck between a happy person and a grumpy person, and you have no other way to express your interests. So I see this in the select board positions, I see this in the school committee positions. Every time we see two candidates up for a single position, we have to ask ourselves whether a ranked choice voting system would have allowed more candidates to come forward, to make their case, to talk about substantive public policy issues transparently so that everybody could understand the differences. And let's suppose you're a happy person, it's great to have three happy people running for positions and discussing what their differences are and getting into the policy differences. It's very polarizing when we only have one happy person and one grumpy person who basically are from opposite ends of the spectrum, and the happy person can say, gee, I'm not a grumpy person, and vice versa, and it's not even a very interesting political debate.
10 seconds.
So everything is happening outside our transparent sphere. I encourage us to get it on the ballot, and ranked choice voting does that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. John Rossi in the no line.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'll start my no comments by stating that I'm very much in favor of ranked choice voting in national and state elections. The reason I think it's a bad idea to pass this particular article is the confusion that it creates and what it doesn't do. I think if we're going to have success in the long run for ranked choice voting, where it's going to do the most good, which would be our national elections and our state elections for the most part, we don't want to start off with an example that's going to create more confusion than it's going to create clarity. Here we have a proposal that's going to start off by not applying to town meeting because it's too confusing. We're not sure what elections it's going to apply to. So if we're trying to invite people into a transparent system to vote and make it user-friendly, it seems to me we don't want to start a system up where people aren't even going to understand what candidates or what positions are going to have ranked choice voting on the ballot and apply on which are, never mind understand it and be able to make an informed decision when they vote. Confusion creates distrust. Confusion creates alienation. And I think if we're going to be leaders in the issue of ranked choice voting, let's do it right from the start. Unfortunately, this particular article would be a mistake, and that's why I'm voting no, and I urge my fellow town meeting members to join me in doing so at this time with this particular proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Mr. Huja with a question.
Anil Huja, Precinct Five. Madam Moderator, through you to the two. Actually, while I'm just going to say what's on my mind. So we had elections this year, and in two precincts we had two candidates tied for the seventh place, and ranked choice voting could have made a difference then. You know, I'm kind of, I was not happy when I heard that town meeting elections are not going to be included in this. So if we really want to make a change, let's do it locally. Why are we concerned about state and national? Let's fix our elections first before moving on. I think it's a great concept, but why was it excluded?
Mr. Chapada.
Hi, Anil. So as I mentioned in the previous question, like a couple of questions before, we looked at the, you know, how the ballot might look, you know, for, you know, when a large number of candidates run. We felt that it is complicated to create a ballot, and, you know, it would create more confusion for the public to vote on a ballot like that. So we wanted to take, you know, in steps, like for us to do, we thought that town meeting members and get it right, and then figure out what it would like, what it would look like when we added town meeting members. The other point is also, the other point is also that no other town that has passed it so far has included town meeting members, so we have no, you know, no guidance. So we just wanted to stick with what has been already passed in other towns.
Thank you. Mr. Huja, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes. If we were to include town meeting as part of RCV, would the manufacturer of these voting machines be able to handle it?
Mr. Dennis or Mr. Chapada?
The current voting machines that Lexington has, which is a model called the Immacast Precinct Voting Machine, handles ranked choice voting. The only addition, as was pointed out in the presentation, is the software for the machines would need to be purchased.
Thank you. Mr. Huja.
So I think what you're saying is this can be done, and my question again is, why should town meeting elections not be included in this petition?
Mr. Huja, since that question's been answered twice now, I think we're going to have to move on. Otherwise, we're just asking them to give the same answer over and over. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, could you read Varsha Ramathan's statement, please?
I support RCV.
Oh, okay, short and sweet. How about, let's hear from Tim Jacoby, please, who's joined us tonight. Mr. Jacoby.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I'm Tim Jacoby, 78 East Street, Precinct Six, and I have been working with these two gentlemen down here in the front who have been answering your questions to date for the last number of months, and I've met with many of you over the last few months, and I urge you to support this article. It's really important, and I fully support what Adam Harrington's done. Thank you, Adam, if you're still here. And Mr. Anderson, I appreciate what you said as well. You said it much better than I could. I was going to go up here and emphasize some of the points that we had raised before, but I'm just going to sit down. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michelson. Mr. Eric Michelson with a question.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Eric Michelson, Precinct One. I'd like to get some clarification here. I heard conflicting information. Ms. Bloom, in her talk, said that if there are, like, most of our elections are for two people for the same office, so two select board members running at the same time, two school committee members, and Ms. Bloom said that in those cases, we would only get one vote. Mr. Barnard, when he spoke, inferred that we would still get two votes, but we could choose to only use one vote. So clarification, are we getting one vote or two vote for multi-openings for one office?
Mr. Dennis.
Yeah, so first to clarify, the ballot looks the same, the voter experience is the same and identical regardless of how many seats are being filled, whether it's one, two, or, well, I guess you just have one and two here. So you still rank the candidates in order of preference. So that's what the ballot looks like and the voter experience looks like, regardless of how many seats are available. The way it's counted is, you always get one vote, but in a multi-seat election, that vote could be divvied up amongst multiple candidates. It's going to count first towards your first choice, and if that first choice is elected, whatever amount of that vote needs to count to that first choice to put them over the threshold will count to that first choice, and the remainder is left over to count potentially to the next choices. So everybody gets one vote in a multi-seat election, but that vote may be spread across multiple candidates.
Mr. Michelson, follow-up.
Yeah, thank you. I understand how advantageous this could be in single-seat elections, but after hearing more about this, I think what you're proposing is one of the most non-democratic forms of election for multi-seat elections, and I definitely, I'm convinced now that I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Steigerwald in the yes line.
Madam Moderator, Jesse Steigerwald, Precinct Eight. Listening to you earlier tonight talk about town meeting members who gave incredible service and brought with them to town meeting very different life experiences makes me think about how important this body is in my experience of this community. And I think one thing we've all opined about after March elections is very low voter turnout. And someone in the list talked about how residents show up and they vote for the big national and state elections. I am interested in strategies that will bring more people to get involved in local government, and it seems to me that we could try ranked choice voting in this way. If we find it doesn't satisfy us, we could amend that process. But I am concerned that by leaving it as it is, we may be losing an opportunity to have more people get engaged. I also think it was raised earlier tonight that trying something new is difficult, and if we can try it at the local level and gain some experience with it, that may make us more comfortable moving forward into a national setting where we experience this for higher offices. And again, if we don't like it and we need to experiment, Lexington's been really good at piloting things and trying them. I am really concerned about this state of democracy. I'm really worried as someone who's studied American history and politics and government about what the national landscape looks like. People are not having easy access to the polls, and we spend a lot of time, I think many of us who are engaged, trying to get more people to step up and run. to step up and run. I see a lot of benefits here. It may not be perfect, but I think it's a bite-sized way to try it out, and I hope people will support this.
Thank you. Mr. Burson in the no line.
Madam Moderator, Scott Burson, precinct nine. I consider myself a reasonably intelligent person, and I've tried to get my head around the explanations of ranked choice voting. But other than the assurances that this will solve a lot of problems in American democracy, I see very little stuffing. I find the arguments about barriers to candidacy to be mysterious to me. The barriers to candidacy have to do with the fact that in order to reach voters in this town requires capital. Okay? When I considered running for select person, I figured I needed a minimum of $5,000, more like $11,000 in order to credibly mount that candidacy. That's not going to change with respect to this. And I have a feeling that if you look closely at all of the indicated benefits of this, we just don't know. We don't know. And we're being asked to adopt a very complex system which, in multi-seat elections, substitutes something that we all understand very well with something just different. I mean, we're looking at a system which very plausibly may advance candidates that would never win a seat under our situation. We're assured that that's good for democracy. I'm not sure, and unless I understand something like this, I am not going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, could you read Mr. Sparduto's statement, please?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Lexington has been at the forefront of history many times. I hope Lexington will lead again by example in shifting our democracy from elections by plurality to elections by majority.
Thank you. Albert Zaven with a question.
Madam Moderator, Albert Zaven, precinct one. First, I'd like to make an observation. The tablet indicates that I'm at a remote location. That's greatly exaggerated. I do have two questions. First of all, I asked the presenters if they are aware of any incident that ever happened in Lexington that would be an untoward result that would be avoided by ranked voting.
Mr. Chapada or Mr. Dennis? Mr. Dennis?
I am not aware. I'm not, I mean, in disclosure, I'm not a resident of Lexington. I, if I could make one comment, which is that, you know, that question has come up, and it's asking the presenters to sort of point to a candidate that shouldn't have won or a candidate that we liked better. And ultimately, for the presenters, this isn't about getting, you know, so Joe Schmo or Jane Schmo elected in 2019 or what have you. This is starting from sort of first principles of what a good democratic system looks like, and that's why we're fundamentally behind it. But I'll turn it over to Shreem for additional comments.
Mr. Chapada.
So I can point to the last election, but the use case that I'm going to use is for town meeting members, and this motion does not, is now excluding the town meeting members. So it's sort of not relevant, but it is a case that has happened in Lexington. So it's in precinct seven. You had the, in the March of this year, the election had a tie for the seventh candidate with the two members having 100 votes. And if it is for the, if the RCV was in place, then it would have naturally sorted it out to, you know, instead of the town meeting members to break the tie, the voters of the precinct would have decided who is the seventh seat winner. And the same thing happened in precinct nine, right? So there was a tie with 134 votes for seat seven. Two candidates got 134. So RCV would have broken the tie naturally by the voters as opposed to the town meeting members breaking that tie.
Mr. Zaven, do you have any follow-up?
I'm not, I've been in town meeting since 1972, and I'm not aware of anybody who got elected who would not have gotten elected if we had had ranked voting. And I just wondered if either of you, you know, if any incident that you could point to to say that a candidate was elected and if we had ranked voting, that person would not have gotten elected.
I don't think that's a question that can be answered, but I think that Mr. Chapada's done a good job of explaining a situation where it might have sorted itself out rather than resulting in a tie. But Mr. Chapada, I don't want to speak for you if you have something else to add.
So in the initial, in the beginning of this conversation, I did mention this is not about, you know, who got one, who should not have been one, right? That's not the point, because we don't have enough candidates. But RCV is going to bring more candidates to run and more candidates to participate in the election.
Thank you.
So that will help, that will help, you know?
All right. My other question, my other question is, I'm not clear on why traditional system of voting that we have here favors incumbents.
Mr. Chapada? Or Mr. Dennis?
Why our current voting system favors incumbents? Well, incumbency has a lot of different advantages. I think as it relates to ranked choice voting, one of the common situations where you'd see a spoiler effect is when there's multiple challengers challenging an incumbent. And we saw that in the example, in the presentation of the Giselle Correa example, where there was one unpopular incumbent, but then four or five challengers that split the vote with one another. And so in a situation like that, you could see, if you have a situation of an unpopular incumbent that elicits several challengers to oppose them, in the current system, the unpopular incumbent could win with a minority of the vote, and that wouldn't happen at a ranked choice.
Mr. Zaven. Mr. Zaven, and a little tip. As I mentioned when we were taking attendance, and on the menu on your screen on the left-hand side, down near the bottom, there's a button called Set Location. So press that button and then indicate that you're in Baton Hall and not remotely. All right. Mr. Miller, if you could read Ms. Porras's statement, and then we'll also hear from Mr. Kaufman, Jake Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Please support ranked choice voting for Lexington elections. RCV is one of the few nonpartisan reforms that encourages more people to enter politics by enabling coalition-building candidates to defeat well-known incumbents that win based on name recognition. This has been seen around the world and in the U.S.
Thank you. And Mr. Kaufman, before you speak, I see that Mr. St. Louis has a point of order. Mr. St. Louis.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mark St. Louis, precinct five. But I rise as one of the co-chairs of the Lexington Democratic Town Committee, and I wanted to just clarify that in the presentation, we had, it was said that we had support, the Lexington Democratic Town Committee had supported the, you know, article. We, actually, when we had our meeting regarding this, we didn't support for town elections. We had, as a group, supported it only for federal and state elections. So I just wanted to clarify that to the meeting.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. St. Louis. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jake Kaufman, One Child's Road, precinct eight. I'm on a bit of a sentimental journey here this evening, back to town meeting with an enormous sense of appreciation for what you do for our community. It was a privilege of a lifetime to serve here for a long time, and I'm thankful that you are here continuing that tradition. I'm also here as an enthusiastic supporter of ranked choice voting, and I have been so enthusiastic for 25 or so years. Before ranked choice voting had been identified, we called it instant runoff voting, IRV. And it is a gift to us of modern technology. If this was not possible before we had the vote, it was possible, but it was very cumbersome before we had the voting machines that we have today. And is, as far as I'm concerned, a huge leap forward in terms of a more perfect democracy because it allows us to have preferences, to not have to choose between, what was the term used before, the happy people and the grumpy people? And sometimes I wonder which one I am. But the truth of the matter is that this, I sponsored legislation to do this in the legislature for most of the years that I served there. The legislation never made it out of committee largely because the people who would have to vote on it were voting, had gotten elected under a different system. So they would say, why would I want to change the system if it got me elected? I think you've heard here tonight why we would want to change the system. It is going to encourage more candidacies. It is going to encourage better communication between the candidates because they're voting, they're vying not just for your vote, but maybe for your second choice vote or your third choice vote. So it's less likely to have the kind of vitriol and, you know, what passes for debate in current elections. And I want to speak to the question about why Lexington. We should only hope that this will come into effect in Lexington. That is, it would be great if we had so many candidates that we actually had to use ranked choice voting for the select board or for the school committee or the other boards that we vote for. We can hope that that will happen. Meanwhile, it's important for us as a community to add our voice to the growing chorus, both in the state and around the country, to bring ranked choice voting to us, again, in the name of a more perfect democracy. I've heard some of the concerns about how complex it is and how uncertain it is. Those concerns have been in place for 25 or 30 years. And what we have found is that the volume of those complaints has gone down.
10 seconds.
But more significantly, the communities that have voted for this have not had problems with it, but have found that it has enhanced democracy. I hope we join their ranks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scheipel in the yes line.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Tom Scheipel, precinct nine. I want to address the case that's been raised numerous times here that where one would support ranked choice voting for, at the state or federal level, but not at the local level. For me, it's pretty obvious. I mean, for whatever reasons, one would think it's a good idea at the state or federal level, those exact same reasons apply for why it's a good idea at the local level. And whether I'm voting for the governor or I'm voting for a position on the select board, it's exactly the same system. So if you think it's a good idea for the upper levels, then I think it's easy to support this at the local level, and I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harmio at the no line.
Hi, everyone. I know some of you might be surprised I'm up here, but I'm going to play devil's advocate today because I think I've heard two things from the proponents, right? The first issue is that voters don't come out to vote. And the second thing is that there are no, nobody challenging incumbents, right? Those are two things that I do agree with, right? And it kind of hurts back to the problem of what are we trying to solve here, right? I think the first issue of people not coming out to vote, right? There are many reasons why people don't come out to vote. One is confusion about how our local government works, right? A lot of people think we have a mayor or a council system here in Lexington, and it turns out we don't, right? We're all sitting here. And so I think what that harps to is this idea of a lot of residents actually don't understand our local government, right? And if they don't know our local government, how are we going to also expect them to understand how ranked choice voting is, right? Because I think one of the points I really do want to emphasize here is that amongst us, we're all confused about ranked choice voting, right? But how can we expect the average voter to understand it, right? Are they going through these information sessions? Are they able to ask questions, right? I think that's a very important thing, right, is education of voters, right? And something I've been trying to work on, too, right? I think two solutions that are very, very relevant to this issue is perhaps maybe we should look for solutions to moving our spring elections to fall elections, right? Just like Boston voted yesterday, why can't Lexington vote yesterday as well, right? I think in thinking about why no one runs against incumbents, right? I'm someone who ran against an incumbent, right, and lost, was this idea that when people don't go out to vote, right, there's no one to help vote for new candidates, right, such as myself, right? And I think that when we think about how we're going about change, right, I think we have to be methodical about it. And I think one of the biggest issues that I had even last week in the town meeting, executive meeting, was how are we going to educate those voters? And I think that that's something I am very, very reluctant to support with in this article, and I hope that you would consider as we vote on this tonight. But I think that looking at how we're portraying this to the public, right, how we're portraying this to the state and federal level, I think those are two very different things. And so I would beg you to really think about that tonight as we vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baskin with a question.
Avram Baskin, precinct two. Through you, Madam Moderator, to the proponents. My question is, so at least, I guess there was an attempt to get an endorsement from the Democratic Town Committee. My question is, did you try and get an endorsement from the Republican Town Committee?
Mr. Chapada.
I did. I sent an email to the Republican Town Committee on March 1st of 2023. And again, I sent the email again to the Republican Town Committee on October 12th of 2023. I have not gotten any response. I have not found a phone number that I can call on their website. So that's where I left.
Mr. Baskin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Hartshorn in the yes line.
I'd like to call the question.
Ms. Hartshorn is saying that she's heard enough debate, and so we'll vote on whether you all agree. It's a simple majority vote. So we're going to pause, give staff a chance to prepare a call-to-question vote screen for us. Folks at home, you should be navigating from your Zoom screen to your, to your web browser, to your portal, because we are going to prepare to vote on whether we're ready to close debate, to vote to close debate. Robert Avaloni, what's your point of order?
It looked like you weren't going to call for votes. I apologize. You are calling for votes.
Okay. Mr. Avaloni didn't trust the-
It sounded like you were going to go straight to the, to the, calling the question.
No, 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 no.
So I apologize.
Yeah, calling the question is just voting on whether we'll close debate. All right, we're just waiting for that voting screen to be ready. Okay. All those who've heard enough debate, vote yes. All those who want to continue debate, vote no. You may also abstain. Whatever you vote, press the blue cast-your-vote button and make sure you get the proper feedback. Folks at home, you should have followed those same instructions. Yes to close debate. No if you want debate to continue. And please raise your hand in Zoom if you're having any trouble whatsoever voting. If you're in the hall and having trouble voting, yes, we have someone in the balcony. Anyone else having trouble voting? We'll pause while we get these situations worked out. Again, we're voting on whether or not to close debate. Is there anyone else receiving help? We're all set. Okay, folks at home and folks in the room, I am going to close the vote now and review your votes. Again, these are votes simply to close debate. Mr. Chapada, we are letting folks review their votes on the screen. We're going through each precinct in order, but if you, this is a time for you to prepare any closing remarks that you might have, because it does look like we're going to be closing debate. In this matter, 106 having voted in the affirmative, 43 in the negative, 17 abstaining, the motion carries. We have closed debate. As is our custom, we give two to three minutes to the maker of the motion if you have any final summation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And I'd like to thank the, the select board for their guidance and the suggestions and for their service. Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank the town meeting for this opportunity, and some of you have been guiding me through this process, and some of you have asked really good questions, and I thank you for that. Coming to the, to the petition, one point I'd like to make it again is ranked choice voting is going to bring non-incumbents into the mix. It will give an opportunity for them to run and win and serve. And that will give the opportunity to minorities to run and, and hope to win. And that will bring more minority candidates to the ballot. That is exactly that problem that I've been hearing from some of you who are opposing this motion. So I think you, I hope you will keep that in mind and vote yes for it. But I'd like to make another point. I've been living in Lexington for 18 years now. In these 18 years, when I moved in 2005, I was told the diversity mix is, the minorities are 35% in Lexington. Today, it is 42.5%. And the reason for that, you all know, is the excellent schooling district we have in Lexington. And it is going to stay this way for a long time, maybe for a very long time. What that tells me is the minority population in this community is going to increase even more. So in 18 years, if it increased by seven and a half percent, think about in the next 20 years, 40 years, what is the mixes going to be? Today, it is 42.5%, but the representation here doesn't reflect that, right? Now, if you think about it for 40 years from now, if the minorities are 60%, for example, do we, do we not want to give them the opportunity to come and serve their fair share to the community? And how do we, if you say yes, how do we make that happen? Do we not, if we put RCV in place today-
15 seconds.
And, and then if we implement other measures like, you know, some community efforts to draw these minorities and give them opportunity, maybe this will not become a problem down the road. We can start addressing it right now.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chapada. Ms. Draw, do you have a point of order?
Usually you cycle back to committees who've said that they're waiting for debate, but I wasn't sure if this, that should happen before we voted or not, so I just wanted to ask.
Are there any committees that, well, I think we're talking about the select board, so we know who we're talking about. Go ahead, Mr. Lassanti.
I'm going to vote no on this.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Ms. Draw. Okay, folks, we're now going to prepare to vote on the motion offered under Article 9. So move to your voting devices. What's the point of order, Mr. Radhulasko Banu?
Madam Moderator, the question was called, we could not have more debate or more information after the question was called from the select board.
I'm sorry. Is that a question?
I withdraw my point of order.
Okay, thank you. All right, folks, it's time to vote. Folks at home, you should be navigating to your portal, and folks in the hall, use your voting device. So all those in favor of the motion offered under Article 9, press yes. All those opposed, press no. All those, you may also abstain, and please press the blue cast your vote button and make sure you get the proper feedback. If there's anyone having trouble voting in the hall, please stand in place, wave your hand so staff can help you. And if you are remote and having trouble voting, need to vote by voice, please raise your hand using the raise hand function in Zoom. 10 more seconds to vote. In this matter, 115 having voted in the affirmative, 49 in the negative, and 7 abstaining, the motion carries. The meeting is now open on Article 8, appropriate for speed hump pilot program. We'll pause and wait for the motion. The motion is the one before you, dated October 13th, 2023, and on file with the town clerk. Ms. Hay for that motion. Folks, we just want to be able to finish our work, so let's try to keep the noise down. Ms. Hay.
Madam Moderator, I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Please turn your attention to the screen behind me. Folks at home, turn your attention to the Zoom screen so that we can see the presentation video.
Hello, my name is Sheila Page, and I work in the planning office in the land use, housing, and development department. I'm also the coordinator of TSG, the Transportation Safety Group. TSG receives requests from residents regarding the safety issues on our roadways. Our number one request are speeds in our neighborhoods, and residents often request speed humps. While we do have several in town, we have been resistant to installing more, and the reasons are public safety response time, damage to town equipment, noise and inconvenience to neighbors, and speed humps are not appropriate on all roads. However, high speeds are persistent on some roads. Walnut Street has seen consistently high speeds despite efforts of some easy speed mitigation techniques, such as narrowing the lanes by striping, a speed feedback sign, and enforcement. A physical alteration to the roadway have shown, such as speed humps, have shown to slow speeds. With careful design and appropriate signs, other communities have seen success with installing speed humps. TSG proposes a speed hump pilot program modeled after the city of Salem. We propose to install temporary speed humps on Walnut Street for two years. They'll be taken up each winter. A consulting engineer will help determine the size and location, and during the, after the one-year pause, neighbors will have an opportunity to provide input, and then we can make adjustments if, if desired for the second half of the trial. The success of the program will be based on a pre and post-evaluation of the speeds, the impact to town services, and neighborhood input. The request also includes money to hire a contractor to install and remove the speed humps each season. This is to reduce the impact on current town operations. TSG is requesting $101,000 from the Traffic Mitigation Stabilization Fund. If the program is deemed successful, we will be back in front of town meeting requesting money for a permanent installation on Walnut Street, and then we can use the temporary speed humps on another street for a new trial. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Radhulasko Banu, do you have a new point of order? Okay, thank you. Just checking. Ms. Hay.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Speed Hump Pilot Program seeks to appropriate $101,000 from the Traffic Mitigation Stabilization Fund for the design, installation, and data gathering of temporary, rubber speed humps on Walnut Street. This pilot program will allow the town to evaluate the effectiveness and impact of speed humps, and will provide the town an opportunity to gather data and build out criteria for possible use of permanent speed humps. The Walnut Street temporary speed humps will be out for two seasons, and they will be taken up in the winter. If the pilot goes well, it is anticipated an additional appropriation will be requested at a future town meeting for permanent speed humps on Walnut Street, and the rubber speed humps can then be used at another location for similar data gathering. The select board therefore unanimously supports passage of Article 8.
Thank you. For the Capital Expenditures Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This project will be performed as two trials over two non-winter seasons. At the end of each trial, there will be an engineering study on the efficacy of the speed humps, which may result in possible changes in their configuration. There will also be public sessions where all stakeholders, including the neighborhood and emergency services, can give feedback on those trials. This is only a pilot program, and the speed humps will be temporary. If they are not the right solution for Walnut Street, then we will learn from our efforts and still have the speed humps available for other future trials in town. If they are the right solution, then after the pilot, more permanent speed humps can be considered on Walnut Street. Therefore, because they can be reused, purchasing these speed humps is not a one-and-done appropriation, nor is it a tax levy appropriation, because the monies are taken from the Transportation Mitigation Stabilization Fund, not the general fund. This committee has evaluated this article only on a financial basis. Specifically, given this potential speed hump program, we have considered whether this is a fiscally responsible path, and we have unanimously answered yes. However, this committee did not question whether this is in fact the right program. We have left that to the select board and you, town meeting. You should consider the impact of emergency response times that speed humps will necessarily incur. Additionally, you should judge the proper trade-off between those increased emergency response times versus pedestrian and motor vehicle safety on Walnut Street. The Capital Expenditures Committee unanimously supports the goals and financial aspects of this article.
Thank you. Mr. Levine for the appropriation committee.
Madam Moderator, the appropriation committee recommends approval of this article by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Smith with a question.
Madam Moderator, Frank Smith, Precinct 3. I have a couple of comments as a resident of Potter Pond, who, who lives directly adjacent to Walnut Street, and then questions, a couple of questions for the maker of the motion. I understand why TSG wants to do a pilot of speed humps in Lexington. I do question the choice of Walnut Street. Walnut Street is, as it's been said multiple times, extremely narrow, very hilly. Despite that, it's used by the Lexington Fire Department as a primary emergency response road, and there's a Waltham Fire Station at the other end of Lexington Street, of Walnut Street, sorry. That fire station uses Walnut Street to provide the town's primary mutual aid for East Lexington. It also has two group homes with handicap residents, a large nursing and rehab facility, and Potter Pond, where residents frequently call for fire department help. I heard the fire chief say Monday night at the select board meeting, I don't like speed bumps. I think we all get that they're bad for fire trucks, and they do slow emergency response times. But he also added, in effect, that Walnut Street would not be among the best places to put them. So my questions, through you, Madam Moderator, to the Transportation Safety Group-
30 seconds.
-are, number one, when you made the decision to pilot speed pumps on Walnut Street, did you have the testimony of Chief Sensibow? And in light of that testimony, are there not other locations that may be less risky? And two, have there been any accidents or injuries on Walnut Street that have been linked to excessive speed?
Thank you. Ms. Hay.
Would you please recognize our, our town planner, Ms. Sheila Page?
With pleasure. Ms. Page.
Okay. Walnut Street was selected because the, there are, this, it is a narrow street. The speeds are excessive. We have done sort of the easy, low-hanging fruit of, of painting double yellow lines down the road, the center, because that narrows, that gives a sense of narrow lanes, so that tends to slow cars down. We have seen success in that. And then we have also installed a speed feedback radar sign that did lower the speeds by about one and a half to two miles per hour, but they're starting to creep back up. The, the neighbors would like to try the speed hump, the, the trial speed hump program. And then also, because this is not an ideal street in that it, it does have public safety response issues, it is hilly, it's, I see this as, as a good place to trial, because we can, it's a temporary trial, we can adjust as we need to before we consider putting permanent speed humps down.
Mr. Smith, you only have four seconds left.
Can we hear from the fire chief?
Is the fire chief here?
Madam Moderator. Is there a specific question that was asked of me?
Well, I think they're, they're concerned about your comments about speed bumps from a public safety standpoint.
Okay, so, yes, I do have concerns. The speed bumps are generally not recommended on emergency response routes. We wouldn't expect to see them on Mass Ave, we wouldn't, you know, Bedford Street and different things like that. I did hear during part of your comments, Walnut Street is a primary response route. When you go down Walnut Street into Waltham, it becomes their Woburn Street, and right at Trappala Road is their station number eight. They do have a nursing home right at the town line, and we do have two group homes on Walnut Street. So for Engine Eight coming out of Waltham into Lexington, that is their primary route coming to mutual aid for us to anything in East Lexington. Speed bumps traditionally will slow your response time six to 10 seconds per speed bump, and depending on the amount of speed bumps that you have, that's going to obviously increase our response time. Statistically, through the NFPA, a fire doubles in size every minute, so you can see that, you know, the 60 seconds for that minute creeps up pretty quickly on those. The trucks carry 2,000, 4,000 to 6,000 pounds of water in them, which puts a lot on the suspensions of the vehicles. Other communities that have had speed humps put in have, you know, through the Chiefs Association, have said that they've had leaf spring fractures and things like that. Potholes are bad enough, but adding that. For the medical side with the nursing home over there and the group homes, it's, it's the kind of the same thing. It slows you down, you know, we always talk in E M- It slows you down, you know, we always talk in EMS, and the emergency medical side of the world is four minutes, four minutes before you start having brain death if you're not breathing and things like that. So once again, it just, the amount of time it takes to get to those streets, and then you're slowing down our response. And then, obviously, if somebody has any type of fractures, you know, hip fractures or anything coming out of the nursing homes or things like that, coming over the bumps is going to, you know, just add to people's pain. So that's pretty much the reason why we really kind of don't want them, we don't want them around town. We do, as people have said, there are a few in town, and we come across those, and at times, when you're going urgently to something, you're not always remembering that at 2:00 in the morning. And so sometimes, you know, the crews have really felt the effects of the speed bumps that are already in town.
So, Mr. Smith, your time is up, but I believe I heard you ask a question about whether there's any accident data related to speed on that road that we're trying to address. Do I have that question correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone who could answer that question? Another, go ahead.
Madam Moderator, for myself, I know we've had some accidents that I can recall, and this is just off the top of my head, Walnut at Conkad, we've had a few. Chief McLean is here, I don't know if he has any additional information in regards to accidents that we might not necessarily respond to, but I can't think of anything off the top of my head that has been anything of significance for accidents.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Hay.
Would you please recognize Ms. Page again?
Yes, with pleasure, Ms. Page.
Thank you. There's been five that have been reported from, to the police between, I think it was 2017 to 2023.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, the question was whether any have been related to speed?
Yeah, I don't know the nature of the accidents.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm going to call on Mr. Lucre with a question.
Hello, this is Jay Lucre, Precinct One. Madam Moderator, through you to Ms. Page, I have some questions.
Go ahead with your questions.
So, I want to know, why are we not piloting some of the designs that would not affect emergency response times or cause damage to emergency vehicles? There's newer types of vertical deflection measures that either allow an emergency vehicle to, you know, bypass the hump or the speed cushion design. Why are we not piloting those?
Ms. Page.
Or why are we not testing those?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, yes. We, I should have been maybe more specific in the article ask, that I consider speed humps to include speed tables as well as speed cushions, and the final design will be determined by our consulting engineer meeting with public safety.
Mr. Lucre.
Through you, Madam Moderator, to Ms. Page, but the equipment that's being purchased with the money is, you've already sort of decided what that design is, right? So the ones that will be installed and then pulled up, they, they're not, they're not, I mean, it's a certain design, right?
Is that correct, Ms. Page?
No, what I, I budgeted for the most expensive design, so the budget could pay for speed tables, cushions, or humps.
Mr. Lucre.
Okay, thank you. So, about the Salem model that we seem to be using, what percentage of the Salem trials result in permanent installations?
Ms. Page.
We, when we went up to visit Salem, we visited a street that had two sets of two speed humps. They've been in temporary status for, I think this is their third season. They haven't pulled, they haven't decided to do them permanent on this one street. We visited a second street that did do a two-year trial, and now they have installed asphalt speed humps. And then we visited a third location that is actually on the way to the hospital in Salem, and they have speed cushions there. And the cushions are where the, are the narrow, they're narrower, so the ambulances and fire trucks, in fact, most trucks can straddle the humps. Those ones, I believe, were on their third-year trial. They have moved them several times because people have gone around them, and they've been working with public safety to work out where those might go. But I don't know the total of all their trials. Those are the three that we visited.
Mr. Lucre.
Okay, through you to Ms. Page. So, this is asking you to speculate a little bit, but do you have an idea, like, what is the chance that this will result in a permanent installation? Is it like 50/50? That, you know, the design will be acceptable and?
Ms. Page.
Do you have a guess?
Thank you. It is speculative, I think it all depends, I feel pretty confident it will reduce the speeds, but fire and, fire and police are an important part of the conversation, and so one of the things we'll be tracking in our data is if it's, how, the significant impact on their services as well.
Okay.
Mr. Lucre, yes.
Through you, can I ask a question to the fire chief, please?
Go right ahead.
Hi.
Go ahead, through me.
Through you, Madam Moderator. What do you, what do you need to see specifically to change your position? Like, at the end of this two years, what do you want to see to where you would say, okay, these are, these are okay? What do you, what do you need to see to change your position opposing these measures?
Thank you, Chief. Go ahead.
I don't necessarily know, because I'm not sure, you know, how they're going to play out and what the final product would be. Obviously, anything that doesn't slow my response times down, it being that it is a, an emergency traveled route, I don't think I would change my mind on that, just for the fact that we rely heavily on Waltham for our community, for fires, in them-us, where that is a, you know, quickly trans, transitioned roadway, and then with the nursing home and the two group homes down there. It's, it, to probably most people, it doesn't seem like it's a, it's a big, you know, important roadway, but in our world it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I need opera glasses in here. Who's trying to get my attention over there?
It's Charles Lamb.
Hello, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you. Any permanent installation would require new appropriation and therefore come back to town meeting.
Thank you. Robert Rotberg in the yes line.
Robert Rotberg, Precinct Three, Madam Moderator. I had the pleasure of installing speed bumps at a college years ago, and therefore, it's possible to have speed bumps, not humps, that will annoy car drivers and slow them down, and that the fire engines can just plow over. So the design of humps, bumps can alter and be changed, and since we're experimenting, I think we can solve both the fire chief's issues and the issues of those of us who use Walnut Street constantly. It's dangerous, it's excessively narrow, there's no sidewalk, and it's time we did something about it. I think we should vote yes on this article.
Thank you. Mr. Avaloni in the no line.
Bob Avaloni, Precinct Eight. The reasons to vote no are right in the opening slide. Damage to town vehicles, inconvenience to the neighbors, damage to the town equipment as well as damage to the local residents that have to traverse the road. I would say that the chief's objection in itself is enough reason to vote no, but I really don't like speed humps or bumps, whichever you want to call them. It's an, it's an unfriendly approach to a road. It's basically telling people, "We don't trust you to drive under the speed limit, we're going to force you to slow down." I would think we should try a different approach. It's only a pilot, but to me, $100,000 is still a lot of money. I know we routinely vote millions of dollars without much debate and almost unanimously, but to me, it's spending $100,000 on what I think is not a good idea. As my last point, I would just say, the town meeting is a check on Select Board. We're not a town where we have a city council and no check on them, so we are a check on them. The fact that they rode unanimously, we don't have to follow that. Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, if you could read Marjorie Blad's statement.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I am in full support of Article 8. As a 50-plus-year resident of Walnut Street, the worsening traffic conditions are frustrating and scary. We would love speed humps and to be declared a traffic-calming area. Rather than spending money on evaluation, I propose we move forward with permanent humps, a sidewalk would be a bonus. We would also appreciate signage restricting oversized vehicles on this narrow street with numerous blind driveways. Any and all help with these issues will be much appreciated.
Thank you. And Kayla Andrews, who's here in the hall, would like to hear from you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to echo the sentiment of my neighbor and dear friend, Marjorie Blad, who, as she noted, has been a resident of Lexington for 50-plus years. My family is new to Lexington, we've been here for three years, and I have an infant daughter that I'm here to advocate on behalf of, as well as I have went door-to-door to obtain close to 100 signatures from neighbors in an effort to try and get traffic calming measures implemented on our very dangerous street. Walnut Street is a cut-through that many people use to go from Waltham to Lexington. It is traversed heavily by trucks. Data collected by Captain Michael McLean in 2020 showed consistent speeding on our street, both northbound and southbound, 85th percentiles of 10-plus miles per hour over the speed limit. Our street is narrow. At its narrowest point, it is 16 feet. It is an undulating road, you have no line of sight when you're going down the road. This is a very dangerous environment for our children, our elderly neighbors, pedestrians, bicyclists, and motor vehicle, motor vehicles on the road. Our street is used by people to access 1,200 acres of hiking paths that abut our road. Bicyclists face grave danger, they often do not have time to see trucks or cars speeding down the road, and have very little time to slow down. Most of us are honestly scared to get our mail most of the days because people speed down our road so much. We've moved to Lexington because we love this town, and we hope that it can be a safe environment for our families. On behalf of my neighbors on Walnut Street, I'm happy to answer anybody's questions about the pros and the cons of implementing speed cushions. We have been working, when I say "we," I mean the residents of my road have been working for five-plus years with the Transportation Safety Group and Town Meeting to try and get something on the ballot to make our street a safer place to live. I please implore you to vote yes for this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Suzanne Lau with a question.
Suzanne Lau, Precinct Nine. Madam Moderator, through you to, I think, Ms. Page.
Go ahead.
So, I was, I asked this question in the FAQs for full disclosure, and that was, were any other alternatives besides speed bumps, humps, or other cushions considered?
I believe Ms. Page described other things that you've done, but go ahead and review that again.
Actually, I meant not, non-barrier methods where it involved the car going over a hump, were road narrowing measures considered?
I understood the question. Ms. Page.
Thank you. We, when we reviewed it, we felt like speed humps was the appropriate measure to do. There is a thing we could do, chicanes, which does narrow the road, but the road is already narrow, and causing people to weave didn't seem appropriate.
Ms. Lau.
Sorry, Madam Moderator, through you. It feels like speed of vehicles focuses on vehicles. What about other safety that was brought up, bicycles and pedestrians? Do you think that the proposed solution of speed humps also addresses that?
Ms. Page.
Well, speed humps will slow speeds, so that will make the road safer for pedestrians and bicyclists, but we're not adding any room for bicyclists or pedestrians. The speed humps work better for bicyclists than road narrowing or chicanes.
Ms. Lau.
Did you consider making parts of the road one lane so that only one direction of traffic can pass at the time with a yield or stop on either side, somewhat like a Vermont Narrow Bridge?
Ms. Page.
We did not directly consider that, but I did see that question in the, in the FAQ. If there's no reason for a car to stop, they won't necessarily stop, so narrowing it to one lane, relying on somebody to stop to let the other car through is, would be difficult, I think.
Ms. Lau.
So, I am by no means a civil engineer, but I have traveled and run across situations, for instance, visiting a friend in Amsterdam, where they tried to limit the speed of vehicles entering and exiting the neighborhood, in which case they had a sidewalk that was as wide as a lane, and then a single lane with pullouts for vehicles, and you basically had to slow down as you entered and exited your neighborhood. It feels like, in that case, the fire truck could go through with a siren on without any kind of hump, and that's just my one little anecdotal thing. So, it feels like this solution exists where the fire chief could get his way, the neighbors could get their way, and everybody would just slow down. So, I would encourage you to broaden the search a little bit for a solution that includes pedestrians, bicycles, and the fire chief's concerns, and this pilot is worded so that it only really addresses a narrow solution set and does not address the permanent installations, so I guess at this point.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lau.
Sorry, I will vote no.
No, no, that's okay, thank you, Ms. Lau. Richard Cannelli in the yes line.
Richard Cannelli, Precinct Nine. I live at 29 Shade Street, and one of the five speed humps on Shade Street directly aligns with my front door, and so I have pretty good experience throughout the day watching cars as they approach and go over the speed humps and so forth. One thing I'd like to make sure if people are quite aware of is how advanced the design of speed humps are. The fire chief talked only about speed bumps. Speed bumps are dangerous, they don't belong even in parking lots. But speed humps can be designed so that, at a given speed, a car is not going to suffer, or truck is not going to suffer, any damage. They can be designed so that it's comfortable at 20 miles an hour, or they can be redesigned so it's comfortable at 30 miles an hour. So, part of the question that I didn't hear the fire chief address is, what speeds does he, does his vehicles travel on? And, you know, is 30 miles an hour? I don't know what the speed limit is on Walnut Street today. Does anybody have that answer?
Again, you're at a yes microphone, so don't pose questions.
Okay, but if it is, so the speed humps can be aligned with the actual posted speed limit, so that all that the speed humps would do would be to encourage cars to go the speed limit, which is really what we're looking for. They can be redesigned and designed to match, and so it's, you know, we have consultants who know how to do this. We should let them do the job, and this is the best solution for bikes, cars, fire trucks, emergency response. I think it's the safest solution. I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Don McKenna in the no line.
Don McKenna, Precinct Six, Madam Moderator. I have a couple of quick points to make about this. Number one, there was a comment made that this money is coming out of the traffic mitigation funds. I personally believe that $101,000 for a temporary fixed trial is a lot of money, and there are many traffic mitigation needs throughout the town, so I don't think we should be spending the money on that. I also want to say that I listened at the Select Board meeting when not only the fire department, but the police department and DPW all made their case to say, "We don't want you doing this." all made their case to say, we don't want you doing this. This is not the right thing. Now, they said it much more politely than I said it. They also all said that they would do whatever, you know, the town wanted. But I think we do need to listen to them. I also want to tell you that many of you know I have a summer house. And in front of our summer house in that neighborhood, they did put in temporary speed humps that they would remove in the off-season. But they were so problematic that they took them out and permanently took them out of there. So they're not the be-all and end-all. But lastly, I want to speak as a patient. Many of you know I had the misfortune of being severely injured. I've had several family members, including myself, who all stayed at Meadow Green. And what I can tell you as a patient that just any little rut in the road while I was traveling in my state was excruciatingly painful. You have a facility there that people are coming in with severe injuries, traumatized. And to ask them to use this as a pilot project when your professionals are telling you no, I think is really unfair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, if you could read Janice Fitzgerald's statement.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We strongly agree with the proposal to install speed bumps on Walnut Street. It will slow down traffic and make it safer for everyone. Speed signs have not been effective. Police pullovers have not been effective. This is a logical next step.
Thank you. Kathryn Roy with a question.
Kathryn Roy, Precinct 4. I rode on Walnut Street today, and I didn't see cars speeding. So I was interested in what we had learned to date about how fast cars are going, when they're going, how many cars go fast. I haven't seen any of that data. Could they...
Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We have, so typically you want 85% of the drivers to be going at or below the speed limit. That's sort of the state standard of determining that generally people are going the speed limit. The 85th percentile for Walnut, I can't remember if it's southbound, let's see. For northbound, this is taken last year, is 32 miles per hour. Southbound is 35 miles per hour. And that's after we have our speed feedback signs and the double-yellow line. Before, in 2020, before we did put the speed back signs on, southbound was 35 miles per hour, and northbound was 36 miles per hour. About 2,000 cars travel Walnut each day, a little over 1,000 in each direction. It's about equal. There is a tendency during commuting hours that the volumes are, that's where the peak volumes are.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Roy. Thank you. Steve Kaufman in the yes line.
Steve Kaufman, Precinct 5. I moved the previous question.
Okay, folks. So now we're going to take a vote on whether you've heard enough debate. So folks at home, navigate to your portal and be prepared to vote on whether or not to close debate. And Town Meeting members, make sure your tablets are turned on and ready to go when that vote screen is prepared. Okay. All those who've heard enough debate, vote yes. All those who want to continue debate, vote no. You may also abstain. And please press the blue cast-your-vote button and make sure you get the proper feedback. If you're having any difficulty here in the hall, stand up and raise your hand so staff can assist you. We have a member over here who needs some help. And at home... Mr. Pato, can you review whether there's anyone at home?
No, hands are up.
You have to plug it in there and here. My computer just died. Get out your abacus. We're gonna go analog. All right. Are we still assisting on voting? Let's do a voice vote. Can you just rise, say your name, precinct number for the...
Rottberg, Precinct 3, no.
Mr. Rottberg, Precinct 3, votes no. Okay, we're going to close the vote now. Review your votes. In this matter, 118 having voted in the affirmative, 38 in the negative, and 10 abstaining, the motion to close debate carries. Ms. Hay, do you have any final comments?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just wanted to add that when Ms. Page was reciting the speeds that were recorded on Walnut Street, she failed to mention that the speed limit is 25 miles per hour.
Thank you. Okay, folks. So we are now going to move to a final vote on the motion offered under Article 8. So folks at home, navigate back to your portal. We're getting ready for a final vote on Article 8. Okay, the voting screen is ready. All those in favor of the motion offered under Article 8 by Ms. Hay, press yes. All those opposed, press no. You may also abstain. Press the blue cast-your-vote button. Do we have any voice votes? Go ahead. Mr. Rottberg in Precinct 3, votes yes. Mr. Pato, do we have anyone at home raising a hand who's having trouble voting?
No hands, no hands are raised.
Okay. Five more seconds to vote, folks. Okay, close the vote and review your votes. In this matter, 84 having voted in the affirmative, 73 in the negative, and 6 abstaining, the motion fails because it requires a 2/3 vote since it's an appropriation out of a stabilization fund. So the motion fails. The meeting is now open on Article 10, Hayden easement. We'll pause for the motion. The motion is the one before you, dated October 18, 2023, and on file with the town clerk. Mr. LaCenti for the motion.
Madam Moderator, I so move.
Mr. LaCenti.
Madam Moderator, the town has developed trails through the Hayden Recreation Area that connect the center recreation area and the high school properties with the Lincoln Fields. But there is not currently an easement agreement in place. This article would authorize the Select Board to accept an easement over all or portion of certain land owned by Hayden Recreation Center for purposes of pedestrian passive recreation and access to nearby town-owned land. The Select Board unanimously supports passage of Article 10.
Thank you. Any questions or debate? If so, please queue up quickly. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. So folks at home, please navigate to your portal. We're going to be voting on the motion offered under Article 10. Town Meeting members, make sure your tablets are still awake. All those in favor of the motion, press yes. All opposed, press no. You may also abstain. Please press the blue cast-your-vote button and make sure you get the proper feedback. Would anyone like to vote by voice? And Mr. Pato, do we have anyone at home who's used the Zoom raise-hand function?
No one, no one at home raising their hands.
Okay, five more seconds to vote. Okay, let's close the vote, and please review your votes. In this matter, 157 having voted in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 2 abstaining, the motion carries. It is unanimous. The meeting is now open on Article 11, Amending zoning bylaw, Associate Planning Board member. The motion is the one before you, dated September 26, 2023, and on file with the town clerk. Mr. Peters for that motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. We're just queuing up the video presentation.
I'm Robert Peters, Chair of the Lexington Planning Board, and I'm presenting on Article 11, an amendment to the zoning bylaw relative to the Associate Planning Board member. This proposal expands the ability of the Planning Board Chair to allow the Associate Member to sit and vote on applications in addition to those for special permits. Presently, the zoning bylaw only allows the Associate Member to vote on special permit applications. After recent zoning changes adopted by Town Meeting, we realized it would be relatively rare for the Planning Board to receive special permit applications, and that site plan review will now be the most common type of application. This change will help facilitate projects to move efficiently through the Planning Board process and allow a full five members to vote on all applications. Applicants and the public are best served by a full complement of board members hearing a proposal. There are five elected Planning Board members that will always constitute the main voting board members. Only when and if there is a special reason that one of the five cannot participate in a specific application, the Chair then could decide to call on an Associate Member to sit and hear an application. At the beginning of an application's hearing, the voting members must be identified, and they cannot change mid-hearing. If an Associate Member is to be called upon, it must be at the start of the hearing. This authority will help applications move efficiently through the Planning Board process without delays in the instance of a board member vacancy or inability to act. Thank you, and I ask for your support on Article 11.
And Mr. Peters, if we could have a motion to receive that report and place it on file?
Madam Moderator, I so move.
There's any objection to receiving that report and placing it on file? Please use the raise objection function. The motion carries. Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. On October 25, 2023, the Planning Board held a public hearing and unanimously recommends the Town Meeting approve Article 11 to amend the zoning bylaw to expand the authority of the Chair to call an Associate Member when necessary and appropriate. We trust that the Town Meeting will support our article.
Thank you. For the Select Board, Ms. Hay.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The purpose of Article 11 is to expand the authority at the Planning Board Chair to allow an Associate Member to serve as a voting member on any application that may come before the Board. Presently, the Associate Member can only act on special permit applications. The proposed amendment allows applications to move forward with a full five members when a board member is not able to act on a particular application due to a conflict, absence, or inability. This change would allow the Board to maintain an odd number of voting members and for applications to move forward without delay. Therefore, the Select Board unanimously supports passage of this article.
Thank you. Robert Avelloni with a question.
Bob Avelloni, Precinct 8. I'm fine with this. I just am curious about one thing. How, what is the process by which an Associate Member is chosen?
Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So the Associate Member serves for one year or until replaced by the Board, and it is a person who applies and is elected by the five members of the Board.
Mr. Avelloni.
Thank you.
Mr. Morse Fortier with a question.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Len Morse Fortier, Precinct 7. Through you. If the Planning Board selects the Associate Member, the public has no input to that selection. I'm kind of confused. It seems like people have to run to become voting members of the Planning Board, and now it appears that that's not necessary if you are the Associate Planning Board Member. So I, that's my question. Am I understanding this correctly?
Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So we're not re-engineering the process. The Associate Member currently exists and was created for sitting on special permits exclusively, if necessary. So we're just expanding it to encompass site plan review, which the action of Town Meeting, the annual Town Meeting greatly expanded site plan reviews. The likelihood of board members either being absent due to work commitments or potentially recousels is such that we could easily have less than five board members available. And this is to continue the practice that we've used in cases of special permits to site plan review, which we expect to see way more applications for than for special permits going forward. And I'll also point out that zoning Board of Appeals has had an Associate Member as well for a number of years. So it's not a different process. In the case of the Planning Board, Planning Board members are elected, and we've always, the Board is electing or selecting the Associate Member so that it is, it is a person who is elected indirectly by the elected Planning Board.
Mr. Morse Fortier, any follow-up?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you. Follow-up question. Who is the associate member currently, and how long has she or he served?
Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The current associate member is Michael Leon, who has been the associate member, I believe, since 2014. I'm not positive about that date, but approximately that year.
Mr. Morse Fortier.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you. How does that reconcile to the one-year appointment?
Uh, Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, the Board has the ability to have a member serve for one year, but if they are re-selected for subsequent years, they serve until resignation or replacement.
Mr. Morse Fortier.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Suzanne Lau with a question. Ms. Lau.
Suzanne Lau, Precinct 9. That's a question for the Planning Board. Through you, Madam Moderator.
Go ahead.
If you look back in the last several years, how often per year do you think this would have helped the Planning Board?
Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, in the current din, in the previous dynamic where the associate member could only sit on special permits, I would say it was probably maybe once, twice a year at most, maybe even less frequently than that. But in anticipation of the site plan review projects that we expect to be seeing based on actions at the spring Town Meeting, we expect the volume to increase and the likelihood of board members to either be absent due to recusal or other commitments is such that we would want to have the five, five voting members available to hear an application.
Ms. Lau.
I'm sorry, I may have missed something, but what other occasions besides the site plan review, would, would it be possible for this person to vote?
Mr. Peters.
So, if we have a special permit, which is the current state, the associate member would be available to sit on that and would continue to be available to sit for a special permit. We're adding site plan review because we expect the volume of applications on site plan review to go up considerably.
Ms. Lau.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Delano Bastian with a question. Mr. Bastian, yes.
Madam, okay. Thank you. Delano Bastian, Precinct 3. I do have a question specifically on this amendment, Article 11. I just, I'm a little bit concerned because the, the Board Chair would have the discretion to appoint any, anyone, any member. Now, the only question, the only question that I have is, how do the, the Board Chair would pick that person? Would it be he or her on discretion? Or would, would be the Board, the, the, the member would, would, would be some kind of vote among the member? But it looked like that what purpose here, the Chair would have the sole discretion. And I'm a little bit concerned over, over this selection. The Board, the Chair, the Board Chair would pick someone at their own discretion. And I'm wondering, can, can we better change that having democratically a vote in the room? Would that be more democratic?
Mr. Bastian, we're having trouble hearing you, but here's what I think you're asking. Are you under the impression that it's the Planning Board Chair alone who selects this member?
Yes.
Mr. Peters, can you address that?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The five members of the Planning Board select the associate member. So, it is elected members of the Board select the associate member. And I would assume that that's a similar process that's followed by the zoning Board of Appeals, so that this is not a new process. We're not inventing a new process. We're expanding it where we expect to see more applications and where it serves the community best to have a full complement of board members available to hear applications, so that we're really not engine, re-engineering the process, but just changing the application of the process a bit.
Thank you. And Town Council, Mr. Macarios, would also like to address this.
I, I think Mr. Pato was about to, but two, two points on the appointment of the associate member by the ZB, in the ZBA's context, because it's an appointed Board. That's also an appointment of the Select Board, but Mr. Pato can correct me if that's not correct. I think the, the other point I just want to make sure is also addressed is when the associate member sits. That's not, that's not entirely at the discretion of the Chair. There has to be a vacant, there has to be a reason for the associate member to sit. So, for instance, the Chair couldn't simply say, "On this matter, we're going to give Mr. Creach a break and have the associate member sit." Mr. Creach would have to be unable to serve for some reason.
Okay.
For example, not, not.
Thank you. Mr. Bastian, do you have any follow-up?
Um, I think this is correct. I mean, the only reason why I read this question, the way that it reads it, the Planning Board Chair not to, to call an associate member to sit on, on application for a special permit, you know, and, and so forth. And I thought the discretion would be lay, rely only on the, on the Chair. But now I understand that the, the process would be a little bit different. Not the Chair would be able to pick, you know, that associate member. That's my understanding when I, when I get the explanation for that.
Okay.
So, I figure I'm okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jensen with a question.
Uh, thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you. Um, I have a little confusion here. There seems like two camps here. Uh, I think one is according to the warrant and according to the Select Board statement, this is actually expand the, the associate members' voting right. Before he, this person could only vote for special permit, now this person would be able to vote for all applications. According to the warrant, it says this person could be when the other, uh, while the members is not available, this person could vote for special permits, site plan review, or other applications. So, it's not just switching from special permit to site plan review, but it's to all applications. So, this is different from what Mr. Roberts was, um, uh, Mr. Peters was stressing. It's only switching from one bucket to another bucket, from special permit to site plan review. Can someone confirm that? Thank you.
Um, and again, we will refer to the motion, not to the, the broad, less specific article. So, Mr. Macarios, could you just address that, looking at the motion?
Sure. Madam Moderator, I would just note that both the motion and the article use the same language in this case. So, but, that being said, the language was intended to capture any application that comes before the Planning Board in which the Planning Board may have to act. Realistically, the, the vast majority would be special permits, site plan reviews. There are also subdivision approvals, although because that has special rules, you would have to consider whether an associate can sit and not be governed by the Subdivision Control Act. I can't actually think of any other applications at the time, but it's not to say that other permitting schemes couldn't go to the Planning Board in the future, and that's why the language is there.
Um, Ms. Jensen, any follow-up?
Uh, yeah, through you, Madam Moderator, maybe we, I asked Town Council, so, or the Planning Board. Um, I could imagine some examples could be planned developments. If somebody want to build, bought a big piece of land, want to build 50 apartments, uh, something like that, that could happen. It, would that be one application that this associate could be potentially voting? And the other example was if there's one location, there's a great location for a big commercial building to be built, and that could be an application as well. Would these two examples be, potentially be voted by this associate?
Mr. Macarios, if you could answer it and do it a little closer to the microphone.
Oh, my apologies. Yes, uh, both of those would likely, uh, in the planned development context, uh, that would usually require a site plan review after Town Meeting. Uh, in the other context, depending on the relief needed, it could be a special permit or a site plan review from the Planning Board. So, it would fall into those mechanisms.
Ms. Jensen.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing, let's see. Ms. Daggett.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Sarah Daggett, Precinct 2. Through you. How does the Board identify candidates for the associate member?
Mr. Peters.
So, I have not been on the Board when we have selected a new, um, associate member, but since I joined the Board in 2019, and I believe that the incumbent associate member has sat since, uh, 2014. But as with any appointment, if there was a vacancy, we would be advertising the position, making it known that we were seeking, um, a candidate. And I would defer, Madam Moderator, to Charles Horneig from the Planning Board, who has.
Because he's been around for a long time. Mr. Horneig.
Madam Moderator, Charles Horneig, Planning Board. I, I was around when Mr. Leon was selected. The previous associate member was Jenna Johnson, who later stepped up and became a full member of the Planning Board. When Ms. Johnson stopped being an associate member, we did reach out through a variety of means, not as formal as, as what perhaps the, the Select Board does now for their openings, but in line with what was done at the time to reach for appointments, asked people to submit, uh, applications and resumes, reviewed them, had the finalists come and talk in front of the Board, and then voted on a selection. There were multiple applicants, multiple people presented their qualifications to the Board at the time, and the Board chose the one that they felt was most qualified.
Thank you, Ms. Daggett. Any follow-up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you. So, does that mean this would be a publicly advertised position that anyone in Lexington could potentially apply to?
Mr. Horneig.
Madam Moderator, um, I, I think it would be better advertised than it was perhaps in 2012, but certainly in, in line with the Select Board's policy on, uh, opening positions. I don't see, I mean, I don't want to speak for the Planning Board too far here, but, uh, there's three of us here, if anyone wants to disagree, but I think the Planning Board would make every effort to advertise the position to as wide a range of people as possible.
Ms. Daggett.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. One further follow-up through you. Uh, what are the conditions under which a current appointed Associate Planning Board member might step down? I, I guess that would be a personal choice, but are there other situations in which you would reconsider and decide to seek out someone new for the position?
Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I think that it, it sort of is on both sides of the equation. I think that the associate member could decide that, uh, he or she was ready to move on, and I think at the same time, a potential, the Board could potentially make that decision as well. But those are hypotheticals.
Ms. Daggett, thank you. Um, Ms. Papo, Ricky Papo.
Um, thank you very much, Ricky Papo, Precinct 2. Um, a follow-up questions to Ms. Daggett's questions that she just posed. My understanding, um, when the, the art, the article was introduced, was this, the associate member was a yearly position. But what I'm hearing is that, um, the person who is in that associate position stays in that associate position until that person decides to move on or until the Planning Board asks them to move on. If this is a yearly position, why is this not open yearly for other people who may want to apply, um, for associate members? As you said, if Jenna Johnson had originally been an associate member and then she moved on to apply to be a Planning Board member, that would kind of give more opportunities to people. Um, so, the crux of the question is, why isn't this reopened every year if it's a yearly appointed, if it's a position appointed for a year?
Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I, I think that's something that the Board will look at. Uh, the previous, the current, um, associate member and the previous associate member were in the position for multiple number of years. The Board has the option and the ability to make a different appointment every year and has chosen to reappoint successive candidates annually for this position. But I think it is, it is a valid point that we will, we will take into account as far as what we do with this position going forward.
Ms. Papo, do you have any follow-up?
Uh, yes, through you, Madam Moderator. I, I guess it's just a comment as a follow-up. Um, if you are going to be calling it a yearly position, then I believe that the, the, um, members of Town Meeting or any member of the community should have the opportunity for this position on a yearly basis. You could choose to make the associate membership a two-year, um, commitment there by having the person get the experience, et cetera. But I, I, I feel there's some disconnect here on hearing that it's a one-year position, yet there is no openings at the end of a year. So, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sayed Rizvi with a question.
Uh, Madam Moderator, through you. Sayed Rizvi, Precinct 2. Uh, have you thought about term limits for this associate member?
Um, I, I, I think the answer is already there in the evidence. Mr. Mr. Peters.
I'm sorry, Madam Moderator.
Do you consider term limits for, for the position?
So, to date, we have not. Um, it is certainly something that we could look at.
Thank you. Any follow-up, Mr. Rizvi?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Marsha Baker.
Marsha Baker, Precinct 7. I move the question.
Marsha Baker, since I see no one else standing, um, there's no need for us to take a vote. So, we are going to prepare to vote on the motion offered by Mr. Peters under Article 11. So, folks at home, um, navigate back to the portal. We're going to be voting soon, the final vote on Article 11. All those in favor of the motion offered by Mr. Peters, press yes. All those opposed, press no. You may also abstain. Plus, press the blue "Cast Your Vote" button and make sure you get the proper feedback. Is there anyone in the hall who needs to vote by voice? Mr.? Mr. Pato, anyone at home raising their hand?
There are no, no hands raised.
Okay, so we're going to close the vote. Review your votes. Could we mute everyone? Yeah, thank you. Yowzer.
We have a hand up online, Sandra Shaw.
Uh, Ms. Shaw, what's your vote? Ms. Shaw, we can't hear you.
Madam, Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Bastian.
Yes, yes, Precinct 3, Delano.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bastian, I can't understand. What do you need?
It is a yes, Madam, Madam Moderator.
So, can we record Delano Bastian as a yes? Is that correct, Mr.? Is that correct, Mr. Bastian?
Yes, yes, Madam Moderator.
In this matter, 124, having voted in the affirmative, 20 in the negative, and 11 abstaining, the motion carries, and by more than the necessary two-thirds. So, we've.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Pato.
You, you still haven't heard from Ms. Shaw.
I, I understand that, but I think we have to cry uncle at some point. Okay, so we have 124. One of those was a voice vote by Mr. Bastian. 124 in favor, 20 opposed, and 11 abstentions. The motion carries, and by more than the necessary two-thirds. Mr. Pato, I am looking for a motion to dissolve the special Town Meeting 2023-1.
Madam Moderator, I so move.
Question comes on that motion. If there is any objection, use the raise objection button. And incur my wrath. Okay, we are dissolved. Nice job, everybody. I'm sorry, I kept losing my voice tonight.